I'd like to call the special meeting of the City Council and the City of Victorville to order. Burke's item is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council? And we'll move to item number two, which is a presentation of a request to seek council direction regarding the city's fringe benefit program. Mr. Cox?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is an item that's very difficult to address because it's -- what is in effect occurred over a number of years, and we now, at this time, are trying to close the deficiency gap in the general fund. And with all the cuts and everything that we have accomplished at this point, we still have another 3.5 million to cut. We have cut capital, we have cut operations, we have done about everything that we can do, and we're still refining the figures, and there will be some more cuts, but it will not be 3.5 million without addressing several fringe benefits and, last but not least, reorganizations and possible layoffs. If the state steps in and takes the amount of money that they have projected that they would take, that take from the state is 1.4 million, which means that we have to close a gap of not 3.5 million, but 4.9 million. And the first one that we start with, and very honestly, I'd like to have about three more months to do all these things, but I don't have the time, and right now, the employees are trying to sign up for their health benefits, and we're right in the middle of that, and so that has caused us to move ahead and present this item to the City Council tonight. Currently, the City Council allocates $626 per employee for health, insurance, dental, and eyeglass, and that's going up 8 percent. The cost to the city is going up 8 percent. But basically, the basic HMO for the employee is $403.18, the basic dental is $17.49, the basic vision is $12.13, and so the city's cost for the single employee, for the employee that works for the city, is $432.80. You allocate $626, and so that employee gets to defer or place in a deferred comp account Effective July 1, with an 8 percent increase, that figure will go to $465.53. If the City Council continues to allocate the $626, then that employee will still be able to receive a deferred comp over his coverage, or their coverage, in the amount That's -- those are monthly figures. So you can see that the city is, with the $626, that they're covering the employee. The problem comes in when the employee has children, spouse, or family. And what the council has been doing for some time, and I don't know that length of time, but all kinds of people here can tell you that, is they have backfilled that cost so that they still allocate $626 to the employee. But then, if the employee is single, that's the maximum that that employee gets. If the employee covers the spouse, the actual subsidy then, that the council is pervading on the back without showing it to the employee, is an additional $102. If the employee covers child, then the cost goes up, but you still allocate $626, and then, not shown to the employee, but backfilled as an additional $85 for that employee. So now, you have a backfill of some employees, 75 in fact, that receive zero additional dollars. You have 52 employees that receive an additional $102 a month, you have 50 employees that receive $800, or $85 a month. And then you have Health Net and Family, you have 151 employees that receive in addition to the $626, $288 a month as a backfill. So you have a group of employees, all receiving a different benefit. And the backfill alone, not the $626, but the amount that you're subsidizing totaled And that needs to be corrected. If we try as best as we can to treat the employees the same, depends upon the employee. Some employees look at this as a penalty for being single, other employees look at it as a reward for having families. But the fact is, the city is paying different benefits to different employees, depending upon whether or not they have dependents and the kind of dependents. That's complicated. If, for those employees who want the point of service, they don't get any additional subsidy, or any subsidy at all. So for some reason, sometime, the council has someone has decided or recommended, but it's in effect, that if you have a basic HMO, you receive additional monies, but if you have a point of service, you do not. It's further complicated by Kaiser's insurance. If you have Kaiser, you receive no subsidy whatsoever. That's been interpreted as, we will reward you if you have an HMO under Health Net, but we will punish you if you have Kaiser. What I think the council ought to do is pay a monthly health benefit to the employees that's equal for all the employees, without getting involved in whether or not they have children, or spouses, or families. It becomes the employees' obligation to look after their own, it becomes somewhat of an obligation of the city to look after our employees. It is a magnanimous gesture for the council to want to cover all of the employees, and there have been ample studies to show that if you have an employee, and they have family at home that's not covered by insurance, they are probably not a productive employee during the time that there's an eldest in the family. But that's more of a moral issue and a management issue than it is a subsidy issue. If the council agreed to pay the $626, as they have been paying, but not to backfill employees' expense, the immediate savings to the city is $636,000. Or you could consider, since the city is paying $626, to consider some kind of an increased cost. Traditionally, what is used for governmental entities is the cost of living. Unfortunately, cost of living went backward. You would be taking money away. But health insurance continues to increase, and that's going up by an average of 8 percent, which means that the council could, in good conscience, increase the $626 by 8 percent, and then that is the maximum allocation for the employees' basic health insurance, dental insurance, vision insurance. In the information that you have in front of you, you see that there is a wide variety of issues that are pointed out in regard to those plans, and of course, options one, two, and three, that's for information. I don't care to discuss it because, oh, I don't, but I don't think it, I think it gets confusing to go into it, because it's a basic policy decision of the City Council as to what level you want to pay per employee. It's evidenced that you have at least 75 employees that are putting money in their pocket, even after the raise of $160. An additional 52 employees that'll put additional money in the pocket, even though it's less, it'll average about $55. So it's those employees who have the larger families or the children that the subsidy will affect. And I know that you're talking about the greatest subsidy, the ones that pay 200, that you're paying, 151 employees, 288 a month, and from their point of view, they're looking at this as if they're going to get a $288 reduction in salary. Difficult subject. This is a benefit, it is not a salary supplement, and you will find that more and more cities are going to, a maximum coverage of all employees will be covered, healthcare, we're not proposing that. And you're also seeing more and more cities going to a use it or lose it concept, not using, not converting the subsidy to, or a fringe, to a subsidy or a cash supplement. There is another issue, I'd like to hold that one off for a few minutes, and that's what happens to the $313 a month for individuals who choose not to take the coverage because they are covered by some other plan. It had been the policy for some time that they had to show that they were covered by another health plan, and it's reasonable, if you don't have the policy in effect, that not only they show that they are covered by another health plan, but that health plan must be equal to or exceed the coverage that's provided by the basic Health Net coverage that the city provides. And I'll stop at this point, and we have several individuals who have worked on this with me that'll be available for questions to the mayor and council. Any questions?
Is there a preferred option recommended by staff?
Well, first of all, let me clarify, I think staff is administration, because we have, we have all kinds of recommendations from the employees who are affected one way or other, who have provided input, and that input is, basically, the most predictable thing about it is, don't cut my benefits, naturally. I think people are worried about that, especially in line with some of the other proposals where we're considering cutting 7.75 percent of basic salaries across the board. I don't know how we're going to avoid that. And while the basic employees have pointed out that they're really getting a reduction in salary or benefits, or a combination, also keep in mind that I'm recommending, and that's not for this one, but the next one, and we'll probably have four or five of these meetings, all the 401A deferred comp for management employees is being eliminated. So, you know, maybe the employees get hit hard on this, but all the management employees get hit too. We've tried to spread this out, so that the criticism, as you know, if you read the newspaper for almost all organizations, that somehow administration takes care of themselves at the expense of the workers, and we're trying our best to spread this across the board as best as we can. And if you go back to the $3.5 million gap, or the $4.9 million gap, what we are trying to do is, if it's possible, to make it equitable and not lay off a large number of employees. The gap must be closed. We also have, since it's been discussed so much, that might as well be said, we can't have cuts across the board, because the policy of the council, and I think demanded by the public, is that there would not be basic cuts in fire protection, police protection, and those are the two huge items that, that's bigger than all of this gap. If it was possible to cut it, you would save all the employees' jobs by doing it, but it's also unreasonable to announce that you're going to be cutting police and fire services. But keep in mind, that as uncomfortable as it is to talk about health safety, it is not uncomfortable, and other cities and counties throughout the state are currently cutting police and fire, and laying off police and fire, and converting every other station from a four-person fire truck to a three-person, on the basis that the infill will meet the requirement, and we haven't even looked at those issues yet. So there's a lot more to come, and I don't think we can escape, any department can escape the cuts. There are those departments that are enterprise funds, there are those departments that, even though they have a huge reduction in income this year, such as water, that still produce enough revenue to support the personnel in that department. And of course, they are going to be taking the cuts as well as everybody else, because it's wholly unfair to not have any cuts in those departments, because they couldn't operate without support services. And you can't have support services taking all the cuts because they don't produce the income. And so, for as much as possible, the cuts have to be across the board. If we can defer capital, we are deferring capital. We don't, sometimes we have no choice, depending upon grants and scheduling, but, and, you know, one of the issues that, well, defer the Dr. Pepper modeling plant, that cannot be deferred, there are huge penalties if we don't proceed with that. That's just the way it happens to work. But we're going to be bringing several items to you separately. This would have waited, if the employees could have waited, but they're signing up now, they need to know if they're going to have a subsidy. If they're not, how much is the subsidy, because they need to get signed up for this coming year. And I indicated that the $313 a month that goes to the employees who do not receive the services, we've received, I'm guessing from the employees who do have coverage, that one way to serve is to eliminate that full amount, and that would not be remotely fair, because, please go back to my opening, is that even the employees that get coverage of the HMO, dental, and health, still receive $160.47 in cash above the coverage. So to tell an employee that you get nothing, it'd really be patently unfair, and we're going to equalize it, and if you're going to reduce the 313, you should not reduce it below the cash that other employees are going to get. Currently, it's 193.20. But I'd like to hold the $636 in advance and go back to the basic coverage as a council policy, on whether or not to attempt to backfill or not, and if so, how much? Or any other questions that you might have in regard to the health coverage for the employees?
The basic rate right now is $626, is that what?
The amount that's allocated by the council is $626, per month, per employee.
The total of the subsidies then add to the $636,000. That's over and above it.
Well, the subsidy is different for different people, that's the oddity. Some people not only get, some people with $626, put $193 in their pocket, and other people that get $626, get additional $288 paid by the city. In fact, 151 employees receive that. It's a tremendous subsidy that some employees receive and others don't.
But is that to cover their families? Or it doesn't, it doesn't go out as cash? Goes out for the premium?
Yes, it's paid as a benefit to the health insurance premium for that employee, not given to the employee in cash.
So I'm, I'm looking at all the various options, and none of them are really saving us any money unless we completely do away with the subsidy. Option number four. Is that correct?
That's where the, that's where the maximum savings to the city is, is option number four. Eliminate the subsidy?
What's that, 589, is that, was that a base?
Yes, Mayor. 589 was established several years ago. When we started the subsidy, it was July 1, 2004. That 589 was the coverage for a family. Unfortunately, that, we kept that amount, we had several years of rate passes, so therefore, the fringe consisted of an extra $37, which covered the HMO dental plan for the family rate. So that's what the $626 was based on. Over the years, the Health Net rate increased, not only just for the family, because the first year, the subsidy was only involving the Health Net family rate. The Health Net premiums increased to the point that now it's involving three different tiers: the employee and the child, the employee and the spouse, and the employee and the family. The 589, we maintain that as if it was the rate, although it isn't. The rate obviously is much more based on what tier it is. That's what the base was about.
But assuming option four was taken, then it would drop back to $626?
That's correct. We would then show the true rate, or at least we would reflect the rate at $626, and then tell the employees, anybody who has to pay more is going to pay everything above the $626, which it would be on a sliding scale.
Is there will be rate increases?
Yes.
As I'm projecting.
That's correct, because it would incur the additional rate increase for the Health Net plan, which is 8 percent this year.
Is the proposed Health Net HMO rate for this coming fiscal year at $626?
No.
It's going to be something more?
It's going to be something more. I can point to which page on the attachments you have, it's going to be, you want to pull it up? It's going to be under where it says renewal proposal, that was provided to us by our broker. He wants to know what the rates are going to be.
I asked if the $626 was going to increase in this coming fiscal year from Health Net for, in essence, the basic HMO service.
But that's, the $626 is what would increase only if the council increased it. The Health Net has increased. Their proposal increases their rate, but that's less than $626.
It is less than $626.
Well, the $626 that's allocated for the employee for the basic Health Net plus dental, plus vision, comes to $465.53. So at $626, the employee still will get $160.47 back, even after an 8 percent increase. The $626 goes up, or goes only if the council indicate, because that's how much the council is allocated per employee.
Let me then approach it from a different perspective. Going into the coming fiscal year, what will be basic Health Net HMO premium costs on a monthly basis?
Or what level of plan? Employee only?
Well, if you were doing option four, what would that number look like against the, the cost of the Health Net? That's my question, Terrence. And that would be employee only, because that's what option four is.
For employee only.
Well, give it to me three ways: employee only, employee and spouse, and then employee, spouse, and children. So I have some range.
Okay. The employee only rate come July 1 for the Health Net plan is $435.43. The employee and spouse would be $746.32.
$746?
The employee and child, or children, $728.85. And the family rate is $947.47.
$948?
$947.47.
What was the first one, employee and child?
Did you say?
The first.
The employee and child is $728.85.
Employee, spouse, and child?
No, that's, we have four different plans. We have an employee only, we have an employee and child, or children, we have an employee and spouse, and then we have a family rate. And the rates that I listed for you is in the second chart that's on there, with the exception of employee only. I was only trying to track the subsidy.
In an explanation on the 81 employees, table number two, I get table number one, that's the 50 percent rule. What is the 185? What's that, how do you do that?
Are you referring to option B?
Yeah, well, yeah, it's option.
Where did the hundred?
Yeah, option B, right.
Okay. The $191 was derived from, if we were to, if every employee that didn't opt for the plan jumped onto the plan, they would then access the $626. So if everybody jumped on the plan, instead of saving $312,000, it would actually cost the city $312,000. Does everybody follow that part? So what we were trying to do is say, if you don't jump on the plan, how much would be equitable to give you to keep you off the plan? If we gave you $191, you'd get more by not being on the plan than you would by jumping on the cheapest plan we have and taking the $626.
Mr. Cox, do you see any way of being able to keep the fringe benefits and find some other ways to cut? I know you've been looking, I'm just curious if there's any other answers here.
I have two answers. Number one, we're still looking for cuts, and we still haven't been able to close the gap. Even with this, this doesn't close the gap, because if the subsidy in addition to the $626 is canceled, it saves $636,000, and we're looking for another $3 million. So, you know, and that's, one of the, that's one of the reasons why we wanted to present everything at one time, so that you could look at 401K, or 40, what is it, 403? 401A. So that you could see the seven and a half, 7.75 percent, the employee subsidy, everything together. But we can't, because the employees need to sign up now, they need to sign up for this year, and they need to know if they're going to have subsidy. They need to know what they can sign up for. They need to know what it's going to cost out of the pocket. And because we didn't have the time, and we're just unable to put all that together, we had to bring this one forward. Makes it a little messy and a little bit, a little bit uncomfortable, but I didn't see how we could wait on this, because the employee would pay the price, and we wanted to get them an answer as soon as we could.
I, for one, feel that you just, I know we need to save money, and we need to look everywhere we can, but, like you said, this isn't going to really pull us out of the hole. And looking at insurance a lot now, recently, for our son, this isn't an easy thing, and when you have a family, it's very, very hard. I really think that if we can, at all possible, leave the insurance alone, just let them sign up and do the best we can to cut wherever we can, and see where we are next year. But right now, it's, I'm the one that's on the POS, because my husband is so bad that I couldn't wait two or three months to have him see a doctor. So we were making fun about the council taking a 7.75 cut in our stipends, and I have a check on my bulletin board that's from the City of Victorville with all zeros. I don't get a stipend. That's because it all goes to Diana. No.
Don't forget Tom. Tom gets a chunk of that, too.
Nothing taken away, nothing taken away from Tom, but Tom has helped. but Tom has helped me in a few incidents with doctors, with my husband, and he's a godsend. And I appreciate it. But back to being serious, this, to me, is very important. I really couldn't vote for a cut in it. And I appreciate all the work you put in this.
By the way, I did ask the question if that backfill applied to other people besides just employees, and was told it does not. So the council doesn't receive any additions, correct? Do or don't? I was told they did not. But they do receive it also? Well, they receive the 626.
Yes.
626, right. Okay, so if there's a subsidy for councilman and family, then that subsidy, same, the employee gets counsel again? Except if they have the POS? So you don't?
No, I get nothing, and I have no complaints. I will gladly come here every council meeting and get paid nothing.
The point I was making, because you wanted to save and everything, somebody's thinking, you look after your own interest. In fact, you're the one, the individual, who does not receive that subsidy in the back end. I just want to clarify that.
I have a hard time looking at this and where it affects our employees. As a former employee, you understand the benefits are very important to us as employees, especially for our families. And we're in a situation, not because of our employees, because of other circumstances, whether it's the economy or other choices we have made in the past. Please, I don't need the applause, please. I'm saying what I feel. And so when we get to this point, and we'll have to make some hard choices, but I hope that we don't make them on the backs of our employees, although we all have to share, all of us will have to share in some way, shape, or form, because we are in a difficult financial situation. We have to do something. And sometimes even in our own households, when through no fault of ourselves, we find ourselves in financial difficulties, and we all have to do things that sometimes are very difficult to do, but we have to do them. But I just want the employees to know that you had nothing to do with the situation, absolutely nothing. So, but I would like to also see this as maybe as the last resort, just like the layoffs, pay cuts. I know we talked about the pay cuts, the furloughs, and some of that other stuff. That's fine, but this affects your, the health of your families. That's very important.
Well, I'm not in disagreement with what the mayor said. I know over the years, we have made adjustments to this health policy from time to time. We have built into this structure a series of inequities that at some point, I think, ought to be eliminated. If the premise is, as Councilwoman Almond and Mayor Cabrealis has articulated, is to care for the employees and their families with regard to providing reasonable insurance coverage, I think all of us would be hard-pressed to argue against that. But if, in fact, we have inequities, and we don't address them now, next year and the year after, that level of inequity will continue to grow. I don't know whether the council has the political will to bite the bullet and deal with those inequities or not. I, for one, think that it's not unreasonable for this council to decide what is the amount of money it can commit to for insurance for its employees and hopefully the employees' families. But if you go beyond that and you argue from a structural standpoint that somebody who chooses not to have full coverage, maybe because they have other options, maybe they have a spouse who has a plan or whatever, that that money should go to them as cash or cash equivalents, then you're mixing healthcare commitments from this city and healthcare costs with something completely unrelated to healthcare and healthcare costs. And that is forgetting about the healthcare and trying to equalize everything from a payroll deduction standpoint. And I'm not saying that that's good or it's bad, but that's where the inequality and the inequity comes in. We have shifted from, over the years, a concept of trying to provide reasonable healthcare costs for our employees and their families to a salary and salary equivalent equality, which results in money flowing for purposes totally unrelated to the healthcare issues and the healthcare costs. Now, I haven't had all of this data long enough to be able to tell from these charts what the various savings or lack thereof would be. I mean, Diana points out that if we eliminate one thing, people may take insurance and drives the costs up, which becomes self-defeating. But I do know that if this council says we're going to keep it the way it is, then I think we have to, from a public policy standpoint, accept the fact that it's going to be a greater inequity next year and every year thereafter. And I'm not articulating a position whether that's good public policy or bad public costs, because that's not the issue before us, but that's the reality. We all know that healthcare costs are out of sight, and they're breaking the backs of businesses and governments all over the United States. And I don't know what the fix may be. I happen to be absolutely opposed to the concept of socialized medicine that is being promoted right now as the savior of all healthcare and health insurance issues. I think as an employer, we have an obligation to the employees, and I share your sentiments, Herr Cabrealis, that we have to fix a problem, and we don't want that problem, to the extent that can be avoided, visited on the employees, because they did not cause this problem. But it is our role to decide what we can afford to do, and it is our role to decide if we are going to choose to perpetuate a structural inequality that's in all of the fringe benefit package program. Comments at this point?
Well, the thing I've been looking at, as everybody's indicated up here, and everybody in this room probably feels, it is a difficult challenge, especially when we've got a mix and match from a lot of different issues here that are created by ourselves, trying to be fair to everybody. Eventually, little exceptions grow out of proportion in each of those areas. I thought I'd get back to a little bit more simplistic approach. And the thought I had was, take the 625 as the base for a moment. I can, I'm comfortable with the idea of giving every employee 625, and you find your own place in your insurance portfolio of things that you will have to do. And for some of you, that won't be enough, and for others, it'll be adequate. But to throw on top of that, I thought an 8%. I assume that 8% was some kind of an increase factor, CPI or something, that you've incorporated into that, or at least the companies have incorporated into their rate structures. Let's give that what it is, 8% onto the 626. That would be about $50 more. That'd give every employee a 676 a month, if you will, amount. And then that's it. That's the value of your insurance package, and you deal with it as you want. And then we attach to that either option A or B. And I could live with either one, because I think the half-price incentive is of value to the city in terms of the dollar issues to keep you off of our rolls and keep you onto whatever other adjunct insurance you have. So my thought was simply to add 8% to the 626 as the base number. And then on top of that, either take option A or B. And I could live with either one, because I think both of them have a rationale to them that is acceptable in terms of the people, the 81 employees that have their own. So that's where I am on this thing. I would be comfortable with that approach here. And that would kind of clean up this issue now. It will grow disproportionately more as time goes on. And we've got to stop someplace and identify that problem. And here's a good point to do it. So that would be my suggestion to the council.
Well, I don't completely disagree with... We have to establish some base. If you do the 8%, it's going to go up to about 675?
676.
676. And that'll be for everyone?
Yes, well, everyone who takes insurance, yes.
For everyone that takes the HMO, it'll be 675. Then whatever, if you have families, then it's an additional charge for that.
That rate was, I believe, $900.
$947?
That's correct, $947.
I suppose another option that we ought to consider, or at least talk about, although all of us have said it's not something that we're interested in doing, but clearly there is a sentiment on this council to try to do everything we can to protect the employees and their families, even though it's been a taboo subject. Maybe we ought to have an analysis of what we can do with this health plan if we make the cuts that Mr. Cox is proposing across the board to include police and fire. I don't know what that number is. I don't know if the city has run numbers on that. But if we're trying to be as fair and equitable as we can to the employees, and if we're talking about wanting to do what we can to not negatively impact the healthcare issue any more than we may have to, then I certainly would like to see the numbers. What is the cash position for our city if we treat everybody across the board equitably?
Well, in order to do that, you'd have to go back to the county, Mr. Cox. Negotiate the contract?
You would have to renegotiate the contract and request that they make a cross-the-board cut. And I don't know, I haven't had that discussion with them. We're meeting with them constantly, but we haven't had that kind of a discussion. What has kind of been voiced by the council was no cut in service. And we have looked in that a little bit. There are reductions you can make in costs without reducing the services. Some become debatable, but we really haven't gotten into that at all. So I don't have any kind of answer.
I know what the headlines are going to say tomorrow, but just for the record, I am not advocating that. I'm just raising it as a management question. What would it be if we were to put that into the mix?
And I think it's fair to look at all the options.
Comments, questions?
Well, I, being in the insurance business, deal with this on a regular basis. And employers throughout the Victor Valley are making cuts. The type of benefit that the employees in the City of Victorville get is much higher than you can get in the private sector, without a doubt. But I don't say that to say that it should be taken away. It's just concerning to me that we do have the inequities that Councilwoman Caldwell talked about that does need to be dealt with. However, I wish she had three more months, but I would really like to see all options on the table, not just this in front of us right now and saying, "We have to make a decision on whether we cut this or keep it in place." I don't think that that's fair to the council, quite honestly. And I don't think it's fair to the employees of the city. I think it's best that we keep things the way they are right now. I think we have to really examine this to address the inequities that exist and do something about that. But, you know, just looking at this as one item in a budget that's some $568 million, it's really troublesome that we have to be put in this position and only look at this issue by itself without looking at all the issues and all the areas that might possibly be cut. And I know city staff and management are working diligently on trying to find those areas. And I hope they can find other areas to cut. But we may have to revisit this issue. I think we will have to revisit this issue, because I don't know how you address the inequity. But I would suggest that staff start analyzing that and try to figure out a way for us to do that. Because if I'm an employee only, and I see someone that has a family, and they're getting $288 more a month in subsidy than I am, I think I want that $288. And, you know, so you look at that down the line, and it's quite substantial. But I just think there's other ways and other areas that we can cut. And I'm hopeful that we see a budget at our next meeting. I don't know if that's too early, but since we only have one more meeting before July 1st, I hope we see that, and I hope we can address it through the budget process. But this time, just looking at just this, I don't think it's enough information, enough time for this council to truly consider what it is we're doing. I mean, we would literally have to knee-jerk react back against the employees of this city and make a decision that's going to be detrimental to all of them. So at least for one, at this point in time, I'm not prepared to make any kind of recommendation to staff, other than just to leave it the way it is.
But we have a problem right now because of the, you have to change or sign up the new plan?
We're already about approximately a month behind with open enrollment. So we need to generate the worksheets so employees can make choices.
Cabrealis, maybe we could look at this next year. If things are still so bad, hopefully, God willing, things are going to turn around and are going to get much, much better. I'm hopeful. And if things aren't, and we still have to look at things to cut, maybe we could bring this back.
We're going to have to bring it back. The inequity thing has got to be dealt with. I don't know how you're going to deal with it, but at some point, because I know health insurance costs are going up. You did well in negotiating the 8% increase. You did great in the last few years of getting a pass. But, you know, because I'm in this business, I realize that that's, the trend will continue, and costs will continue to go up. And so that 626 will begin to dwindle into virtually nothing unless something changes at the national level or the state level that will curtail costs. But there's no indication that that's going to occur at all. So I know there's a lot of talk by a lot of people in Sacramento, as well as in Washington, DC. But as far as I'm concerned, it's all talk. So I don't foresee this changing, this trend, this continual increase every year. So therefore, it's something that we're going to have to deal with at one point in time and get everybody on the same playing field, same level, so that there's not this inequity that exists now.
And I don't disagree with that. And when I mention that we need to protect the health or the families, I mean that. But I know there has to be some way the escalating cost of health is going. We need to find some way to control that. that. And so I would hope that staff would be looking at that, and to find some way to control that and make it applicable.
We will continue to.
Well, I would just say, you know, in the interest of trying to bring some clarity and some closure, both to the healthcare cost issue as well as the inequity issue, I could, at least on an interim-go-forward basis, I could live with Mayor Gabrielle Ellis's suggestion about ramping up the six twenty-six to six seventy-six, or whatever it is, for the employee. And put in the take-it-or-leave-it proposal so that we get rid of the inequity. And then let the staff do whatever the staff can do to try and look. I'm sure that if there were ways, of course, I may be speaking way out of turn, Tom, but I would think if there, in thirty, or sixty, or ninety days, a change of circumstances where all of our financial problems have improved, and we wanted to go back and make some adjustment to the plans, would we be precluded from doing that?
We would not?
So it'd be six seventy-five?
Well, I'm using the numbers that I think I heard Diana say.
Or six seventy-six.
That if you put in the eight percent, then the next fiscal year cost for basic HMO is six...
Seven-six.
Six seven-six?
Six seventy-six. So you would apply the new fringe as six seventy-six, and the difference in any premium the employee would pick up?
Well, I think that's what Mayor Gabrielle Ellis was suggesting.
I think it was Councilman Rothschild who proposed it. And I believe that's... Which is none of the options here. So I just want to make it clear, because...
That was my thought, was the, yeah, to go ahead and level this thing now and make it a value for each employee, a certain dollar amount. And the eight percent seems to be the industry figure for the increase. So add eight percent to the six twenty-six, that comes to the six seventy-six. And then none of the, you know, you do with it as each family and each individual sees. And then you can either take option A, B, or zero, even, you have the zero option, I guess, too, for some of them. But I think there's value in that option A or B, added on one of those two options. That was my suggestion.
Well, I thought it was Rudy who did it, but whoever did it...
No, I just mentioned the six seventy-six. That's the base.
That was the fifty-three. Eight percent is...
Yeah.
My pitch on that, or my spin on that, though, it would be used for insurance. If somebody chose not to do it, they don't get the money in the form of a supplement to their paycheck. Otherwise, you're never going to get rid of the inequity.
Well, they don't get the money... They don't get the money from this amount here. They only get the money if you don't have, if you don't take the insurance, which is the other plan.
Which is three percent. No, what I believe Councilman Caldwell mentioned is, if you increase the fringe from six twenty-six to six seventy-six, what would happen with that additional fifty dollars if you're currently on a plan and not using that money? Can you cash it out? I believe is what your comment was, and you're saying they shouldn't be able to cash out that additional fifty dollars.
No, the new base number is six seventy-six.
Do whatever they want with.
Forget the six twenty-six. Now, the six seventy-six number, there it is. Employee, you've got six seventy-six to do with. And then, you know, there's still a side issue here of the eighty-one employees. I mean, assuming you accepted that for a moment, then what do you do with them? You have A and a B, or there's actually a C, would be zero. I think that some of the employees, I don't know how many, would have no incentive to ever still come back, but some might. That dollar amount might be worth it for them to maintain their status quo, and it would certainly be a dollar saving to us, because if they come back in, then we're paying them seven sixty-seven. If not, then you're paying them either the three oh four, a half of that, or the one, or as you calculated here, one ninety-one and this. That would change a little bit because of that dollar amount. But that would be, whatever that differential is, go ahead and do one of those options. For me personally, I think that's a cost benefit to the city to maintain that option in there and to pay them not to be on the plan because they've already got their other insurance. That's all I thought about on that. Now, I could be wrong on that one, but that was my thinking on that. Did everybody understand that?
Well, I'm going to go to option C, because I firmly believe that what you will see is all eighty-one employees will enroll in the health plan. I've seen this done at other employers, it happens all the time. And any savings that we're potentially talking about right now by capping it six seventy-six and doing away, either you use it or lose it, they will use it. It'll cost the city more money if we go down that road.
You're saying that would be the case with option A or B?
Well...
Or all three options?
Well, it was my understanding that the proposal was, we go to six seventy-six, they either take, they either use it towards health insurance, or they don't get anything.
That was my comment.
Okay, yeah. And I tend to agree with you on that, because I really think that it's a health insurance benefit, not a payroll or cash benefit. The only thing I'm saying is that I caution, because I look at option C, and option C, it says annual cost to the city, zero to six hundred and eight thousand. You know, the reality is, you may have a small percentage of the eighty-one employees that choose not to utilize that six seventy-six at all, but it's doubtful. They will use that money, it will cost the city more money.
You don't... What I'm hearing, I think you're saying that you agree with what I said, or not? I said A or B.
What'd you say?
C is... Your rationale is exactly what I thought for C. There will be people coming back into the plan. But if you pay them a bit of... They've got insurance on the side. You pay them a little bit of money, whatever that amount is, then they're not going to be back on the plan.
Well, I just, I... No, I don't disagree with that, Councilman Rothschild. What I'm saying is that that issue of inequity still does not go away. Even if you look at the issue of what is paid for under the Kaiser plan, which is substantially less than the Health Net, you know, those folks aren't... They might be able to get all the different products versus those that take Health Net, and they won't be able to get all the different products with six seventy-six. You're going to have inequities with the Health Net-Kaiser combo regardless? Is that a correct statement? So, and for those that choose to take the POS or much like a PPO, I mean, that's an upgrade you're paying for, or you're getting zero money for, whatever the case may be. But you're paying for that. But everybody baseline should get the Health Net-HMO at minimum. The folks that are on Kaiser, I don't know how you're ever going to address that inequity, because their costs are lower. So they're, you know, are they getting whatever they don't, whatever isn't paid in the fringe benefit back in a payroll?
Actually, the Kaiser premiums are more. There is no subsidy to that plan.
Oh, they're more, okay.
They are more.
For some reason...
They are more.
But they only get the six twenty-six.
The Kaiser employees do receive the six twenty-six. And anything above that, that their premium is, they pay for. But you can get a single person on a Kaiser plan and still have cash back.
That's another of the inequities.
Yeah, see, they're... Okay. My apologies, I misunderstood that. I thought Kaiser was left.
The Kaiser...
So what you're saying is that on Health Net, we subsidize, but on Kaiser, we don't?
That's correct. The Kaiser plan has never been the original plan, the original HMO plan. I believe we approximately have fifty employees on Kaiser altogether. I'm not sure. One of these rate sheets may show the actual amounts. The Kaiser plan was thrown on as an add-on, and over the years, because the differences have, tend to increase, we have worked with Kaiser management to be more accommodating of the city needs as far as our employees. When the rates for Kaiser started going with double-digit increases multiple years in a row, we actually considered canceling the plan. The city met with the employees, and the employees said it really didn't matter what the rates were, please keep the plan. That's when we started doing the subsidy on Health Net, and we explained the discrepancy or the disparity between the Health Net plan and the Kaiser plan, and the fear that the Kaiser enrollees would start to say, "You're treating us differently." And the answer was, "Yes, we are. Your plan is different. You do not have an urgent care up in the high desert. You do not have emergency room in the high desert. When you need treatment outside of the clinic that's here in Victorville, you are basically taking your family down below, or you're taking yourself down below. You're missing a full day of work." So we strike, you know, we got data on the amount of sick leave that the Kaiser enrollees were utilizing versus non-Kaiser enrollees. And we actually looked at canceling the plan, and the requests from the employees were, "Please don't. We want the plan, it's still viable." Unfortunately, every year, fewer and fewer people participate, which means Kaiser continues to increase the rates. They're over eleven percent this year for a rate increase. And that was after we got them down from, correct me, Tom, about eighteen percent? Correct. And so we continued to work with Kaiser. Kaiser is... They're not as workable as we are with the Health Net plan. They basically say, "This is it," and take it or leave it. So that was an option, though, to cancel the Kaiser altogether. And that's not an option we wanted to use. We have employees who love the plan, and we want to keep it there for them. But the issue of the disparity between the Kaiser enrollees and the Health Net enrollees exists. Right now, the rates are approximately a hundred dollars more to be on the Kaiser plan than it is to be on the Health Net plan. So what would happen if we eliminated the Kaiser plan and forced everybody onto the Health Net rates? Possibly the Health Net rates would go lower. But once again, we're trying not to do that. We're trying to offer options to employees. I'm sure if you were to poll some of the employees behind me, they'd say, "Please leave the Kaiser plan alone." So that's what we have done over the years. But we do have that disparity.
Well, again, boy, we have more disparities than I thought we originally were talking about. I'll go back to, again, my recommendation, we leave things in place the way they are. However, that being said, the only way you're going to get to no disparity in everything equal is come up with a number, give it to them, take it or leave it. And unfortunately, I'm not advocating that right now, because I'm looking at those eighty-one employees. I know they will enroll. It will actually cost the city more in fiscal year 2009, 2010. And if we're looking to cut our expenses, that's not going to be the way to do it. But I think it's something that staff's going to have to come back, say, "Here's the number we're recommending. This is what they get. They can use it for whatever they want, but they have to take it, or they don't get it added on." That's just going to have to become the way we operate in the future. But I'm concerned that if we did that, if that was our recommendation to staff for 2009, 2010, it'll actually cost the city more money, not less.
Will be in the form of a motion?
Sure. Did you get all that, Carol Lee?
Thank you.
Nothing, that's your motion?
I'd like direct staff to go back and work to resolve the inequities.
Let me make sure I understand the motion. If I understand the motion correctly, your motion is to leave the healthcare structure and the fringe as it is?
Correct. As it is currently. But...
The directions to staff to study and bring back things.
Study, yeah. We're going to have to look at that early on, so that we have plenty of time to let everyone know where we're going.
If this motion prevails, then we do nothing for a year, is what you're saying, basically. Because we can't step out of this after we've started, right? I mean, six months into this or something, you can't... Okay, we've got a new plan now, let's hear it's the way it works.
That's not necessarily true. We could go back and reassess. We could start over with a new plan, have a new open enrollment period, and it would simply be a new contract year. We're only obligated to the insurance companies based on a thirty days? Thirty days' notice.
Okay, I didn't understand that.
You know, the concept that you're talking about, the only way I know to achieve it is to have a super composite rate. Some agencies do have that. It's not very popular, but you can have that. And therefore, if you have that super composite rate, you will have no cash out, or you could have no cash out. But I believe you would need a lot of advanced planning to be able to do that. And that's a concept we can bring back to council, if that's something that council would like to entertain.
Well, and beyond that, just also maybe a survey of other cities and what they're doing to address this issue. I know you probably have already discussed that, but...
No, I sent the city manager a fifty-six-page report on surveys of other cities.
Oh, okay.
But because you start getting into a lot of different areas, every entity operates differently, every entity has bargaining units, you know. I last worked at an agency that had seven bargaining units. You had three, four tiers within each bargaining unit, and how much you gave them was based on that. And you simply have multiple factors involved, whether you have cash outs. The bottom line is, we need to know what council's policy is. And if council's policy is to provide insurance for the employee only, we come back with a policy that mirrors that. If it's to provide insurance for the employee only and a portion to their dependents, we'll come back with that policy. And if it's to provide insurance for the employee and their family, we'll come back with that policy. And if the other part of that is no cash out, I would think the super composite rate might be the best alternative.
Your motion?
I've already made it.
The voting screen up, right there? Please vote again on that item. Thank you.
Okay. We're now going to item three, which is closed session. Thank you.
Doesn't give you an option to go back to Carol Lee's.
That's again a problem.
The council has two reportable actions as a result of closed session. The first is in connection with the Victorville Chicas litigation, case number eight zero four eight five two. The council, by five-zero vote, agreed to enter into a in-lu settlement payment of twenty thousand dollars with Tom Keating, DBA, Happy Trails RV, contingent upon his agreement to remove all of his property from the property and relocate off the property. The second item was, the city agreed five-o to initiate litigation with Moniz Investment Properties to ensure that they abide by the terms of their agreement with respect to property identified as APN three zero seven two two five one three zero 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 zero, and to enforce the terms and provisions of the amendment to the agreement regarding removal of signage encumbrance from the subject property. That's the end of the reportable action.